So I'm calling the, this meeting of the school committee to order. We are recording and we're feeding live on the cable access channel for Concord Carlisle and through their video stream so that people who don't live in Carlisle can also watch the meeting happen. Sarah Wilson, school committee member, is on my phone. And so I just want to clarify that tonight, we're not going to open the floor up for questions or comments because we really need to just have a conversation among ourselves to kind of find out what we need to do. We've been so busy trying to straddle listening and answering questions that I think that we haven't had a really, a good chance to just sort of talk this through ourselves. We have several, three members of the Board of Health here so that if we have a question, we can ask them, or if, Jim and I met with them last night and they may have some things they want to add to the dialogue that we might not be picking up on. So that's kind of the, the structure that we're going with. I do want to start by thanking everybody, community members, faculty, staff, members of this, this committee, for everything you guys are doing to make sure that we can keep our students and our faculty safe, make the right education and safe decisions for everyone in Carlisle. It is definitely, it's the most difficult decision that I've ever been engaged in. I'm glad to be doing with these five, four people because I know how much you guys are invested in doing the right thing, just like me. So, thank you to everybody, and especially to Jim, who seems to be the point person for everything, and he's doing an amazing job keeping it straight. Alright, so what we're going to do is, we're going to start by asking Jim. Jim turned into the state, the three models that the state requested, that we turn in without making a decision. They wanted us to do full back-to-school, a hybrid model of some school, some remote, and then a fully-remote model. So Jim's going to present those, and then I believe that we have a discussion or presentation from Laura Marshall. Thank you, Laura. And so we'll listen to Laura's presentation, and then we're just going to have a talk. We're just going to share what we don't understand, what we do understand, and see, you know, just like we were having dinner or something. Alright, so Jim, why don't you start by telling us the three models?
So, I'm sure by now everyone's familiar with the three-model approach back in June 25th.
Can you hear okay?
DSE released their guidance, and the guidance required all districts to come up with three models for real.
Okay, so I can move you down the room.
The first model would be a full-person model. Get as many children as you possibly can back for in-person instruction. The second model is a hybrid model. Would be a model where some children come to school and other children do not, and then they switch in some fashion. And then the third model is a full-remote model where all instructions take place remotely, as it did this past spring. So we were charged with coming up with the three plans, understanding that which plan we implement and when is going to be a fluid situation, right? Depending on where we are as a community, as a state, come the time that doors open for school again, it could be any one of those three, so we needed three models to move forward with. So luckily, we have, we have a back-to-school task force, probably about 46 members, faculty, staff, parents, community members, have a meeting and kind of looking at the variety of components that we need to look at for real-worldy school, and they all contributed to the development of the three models that we submitted in our initial draft to the state. So our first model is the full-in-person. The state asked us to run a stress test on our building, to see how many students we could get back into this building for full-in-person instruction, and they gave us some guidance, and the guidance included like we needed enhanced precautions, we needed masks for students in grades two and above, we needed to make sure we had handwashing and hand sanitizing available, new protocols for disinfecting, a whole number of health components that we needed to bake into this plan. But they also gave us this minimum distancing of three feet to allow us more opportunity to bring our students back into that space, and that was based upon the guidance of medical professionals they were, they were speaking to, or members of the state task force, as well as a variety of medical fields and genres. So, we had that guidance here in Carlisle, we had a lot of conversations. Matt was great running the stress test, he identified what our ability is to bring all of our students back. We realized that we could bring all of our students back and have really well-designed classrooms if we, if we stayed in that four-foot, five-foot range of distancing in the schools. And that was the plan that we kind of discussed for a number of weeks. Here's what we can do. We're going to take the state's opportunity around the three-foot minimum, and we can make this, this work for us. More recently, we've heard really the concerns of many people, faculty, staff, parents, around that, that difference of the minimum three-feet distancing and the six-foot distancing that which we've all been familiar with over the past months, since back in March. So we again, sent Matt into the rooms with the tape measure to design the classrooms, and we also realized that we can make it work with six-foot distancing. It does make the classroom setup less optimal, but we can bring all of our students back with six-foot distancing in the classroom. So I think that should go a long way to make people feel more comfortable, and of course we have all the other precautions of mandatory masks that we're looking at for everyone, not just second grade and above, really getting all, everyone in the building to wear the mask when they're here, along with all the other protocols and procedures we have in place. So that was a big, that's a big part of our fully-in-person model, is that we can bring everyone in, and that will work for us. The other model is the hybrid model. The hybrid model is designed to have some kids come on some days, and other kids come on other days. We actually surveyed parents, and we surveyed faculty and staff members, and we got feedback from the curriculum group on the hybrid models. You've heard of the hybrid model, some models have kids coming every other day, some models have students coming on Monday and Tuesday, and other students coming on Thursday and Friday, some models have students coming three consecutive days, and then the other kids come the other three consecutive days, some models have kids coming in one week and coming in the next week. So there's a variety of different models. Last time we checked, the faculty survey said that the two days out of the five days worked best for the most families. Asking our faculty and staff, the two days out of the five days had the preponderance of people from the faculty go along with that, and the curriculum working with. That supported the two days out of five days model. We'd have students come in on Mondays and Thursdays, and the other students come on Tuesdays and Fridays, and Wednesdays we look at as a morning-remote period. So that's what our hybrid model is looking like. And one of the, one of the interesting things about Carlisle and our hybrid model, is speaking with Matt, and Dennett, and Lori Bruce, we're also able to group students based on like the needs of every classroom, right? Instead of just saying, "We're going to do this alphabetically," and who knows what the different makeup of the groups are going to be, and whether that's going to be productive for instruction, we can go into those groups, we know our students, and we can handcraft those groups to make sure we meet the needs of our students, and we make it most beneficial for students and faculty and staff. I must say, one other piece of that, I did say to our faculty and staff that we would have further conversations around that model with them, so I have put that on the agenda for our meeting Thursday, so we're also meeting weekly with our faculty and staff. So we will, we will unpack that a little further on Thursday with regard to our hybrid model. And then we have our full-remote model. Everyone's familiar with what the remote model looked like back in this past spring, and I must say, our faculty and staff worked incredibly hard to transition to that remote model last spring, and make it work on the fly without any, you know, I think it was March, March 12th we were in school, and then it was probably March 15th we were up and running with the remote model. So like, credit to them and all their hard work and effort. And I also appreciate the families, right? The families took what, what that model looked like then, and with all like the challenges that presented to those, to the families with younger children and instruction, and whatever that model was, and however it impacted their children, everyone was super supportive of the faculty, staff, and the model we had last spring. In retrospect, not in retrospect, but we all, we all acknowledge it wasn't the best model for remote learning, right? But we appreciate the fact that everyone's worked really hard to make it happen, and everybody was pleased with the way it worked out. Looking at this year, as we move into this year, if we have to implement the fully-remote model, so that's one of the three other plans for, it's going to be a much more robust program, with much more direct instruction, and that would be both synchronous, you know, everybody's in there in a Zoom lesson at the same time, and asynchronous, where teachers might be recording lessons and kind of doing a flipped classroom, where families can watch the lesson when it's convenient for them, so that for our younger students, sometimes, you know, parents, if folks are still home, or if they're away at work, they may not have that availability, because with our, you know, kindergarten, first grade, you really have to sit there with them and be the instructor. So sometimes it feels like the feedback we've received in sort of this asynchronous might work better for those folks. But we've had, we've got feedback from the surveys that we did at the end of last year, and we have the work of our administrative team, and we have the input of the curriculum team, which will all kind of infuse into our, our remote model, which as I said, I think I posted, it has, in the draft, it has like, each class will, will have this many direct lessons each, each day, specialists will have this many lessons each week. It really will be a really structured school day for our students. It'll be some of, it'll be very different than we had last year, but it'll be much more structured, much more robust. But those are the three programs we have. We're ready for full-in-person, we're ready for the hybrid model, and we're ready for remote. When I say we're ready, we still have time to do work and fine-tune all of those, and we have our faculty and staff got a letter today about summer days, and because traditionally we have summer workdays, where they can, you know, put in a proposal, and have their proposal accepted or tweaked, and they can get paid for working summer days. Traditionally, they have two or three of those summer days each, so we gave them some guidance if they want to write their proposals, and we really want them to focus on the in-person model as we come back, and the remote model, right? Like, we know that we need to be prepared for remote, so we have those pieces. We also have, the state has given us some relief from 180 days, so they've given us 170-day schedule for this year, so we also know we have some of those days at the start of the year for our faculty and staff to come in and both get trained on the new health protocols and procedures of the building, but also to do some of that planning work to make sure that we are prepared, day one, whichever model we're in, we're going to hit the ground running, and our kids and families are going to get the best experience possible.
Great, thank you, Jim. A lot of work there. Two other things that I wanted to add to the mix. One, the back-to-school task force was a task force that Jim put together early in this situation, and he offered this to everybody in the Carlisle community, well, everyone who has a child in school. So that turned out to be about 44 people?
Yeah, I would say everyone with a child in school, all the faculty and staff.
Oh, right.
And we also used our master planning steering committee.
Okay.
To get some of the folks involved.
So it ended up being about 44 people, these are, these were weekly meetings, and what's happening now, and has been for many weeks, is that there are four different subcommittees to that big committee, and they are exploring the four, four of the different areas that had to be addressed. So curriculum, the physical spaces, operations, the finances, and of course, letting people know about what's happening through communication. Secondly, we did come in on Monday, if you were able, members of that committee and the school committee, and the Board of Health, were invited to come and take a tour, and see what the building looked like, what the bus looked like, so that we could see what the spaces would be, both for the teachers' vantage point and for what children would be experiencing. And it was great because we had the administrators with us, so Lori Bruce was able to talk about how, a little bit about the summer program, and how that has, can inform some of what we're doing. So those are just two pieces I wanted to add to how we're getting to where we're going. Now we have a Laura Marshall here, who has run the summer program. It ends this week? It ends Thursday, so this is a great little sample of seeing what it was like to have kids in the building.
Can I give Laura a little intro?
Yes, please.
I just want to say, so Laura's been working in the district for a number of years she's been in the district. Well, just recently, she was, she became a full-time certified special education student.
Oh, congratulations.
So we were so thankful for her.
Wasn't that fortuitous?
Absolutely, and then she, you know, you know, we really worked hard to make sure we could provide an opportunity for our summer school students to be in-person, because it is really critical for our most vulnerable students. And we had another faculty and staff to step forward to be part of that, and I just want to say thank you, Laura, and really thank you to everybody, the entire summer school faculty and staff for putting themselves up.
Well, thank you for your welcome, and thank you for all coming. I have to say, I've taught summer school, this is probably my eighth, maybe ninth year doing this, and a lot of it is because of my trigger, because we've always had small classes, so it's fun. But anyhow, so my name is Laura Marshall, I'm a fourth-grade special educator, and this year in middle, for middle school, we decided to do things a little differently, and we actually rolled out a program of the five weeks to research coronavirus. So it was kind of a little different, but it's what we did this year.
Who participated, and how was it structured?
We had one teacher, we had two aides, and there were five students in grades five through eight. Everyone was excited to be in the school, both teachers and students. There was one parent who reached out to me and expressed concern for their child, and I said, you know, "We'll address it as we go if the student was concerned, for whatever reason, the accommodations, we could change it up, if, you know, if they needed something." In the end, the student was attended all the days, and his head seems like he's doing well. We took necessary precautions to make sure everyone felt safe. We have hand sanitizers all around the classroom, we have opened the windows every morning to make sure we have fresh air, we've maintained physical distancing between students, both within length, to make sure we always have our space. The classroom we have, that we are using, has a sink, has hot water, and paper towels, which for me was important to have the paper towels and the soap, because I'm a hand washer. And then each day, the students would arrive to school, and they were assigned seats. So no, they were assigned, they found their name tag, and they sat down. And then from there, there was Chromebook assigned to them, and every time Chromebook was, they needed to use a Chromebook, the teacher would bring it over to them, they never went to the cart. We would always either collect it from them, or we would distribute it to them. And the same with materials. Each student was given a bin of materials, they were given scissors, papers, folders, whatever materials we thought to be with need, we had contained them on their desks to limit the amount of touching that we did. Students were physically distanced, six apart from each other, so again, both way this way, six feet, and this way, they were six feet. So again, we were very mindful of that, and made sure that they did not come in close contact with each other. We tried to do it the best we could. The program ran for five days, excuse me, five weeks, three days a week, and three hours a day. And the day, the way the day is scheduled, it starts around 8:45, for about 25 minutes or so, we do the morning work, then the students do COVID research, then we have snack recess, we go to the libraries one day a week, students would read, then there's an activity, and then choice time when people finish their work. So the positives, students were clearly from Jazz got coming to school, they were happy with the building, and it was a lot, you know, I think they were engaged with the activities and the summer research project. So we had the five students, and the summer project was learning about COVID, so one student chose to study vaccines, one studied, one student looked into the impact on Carlisle, another student researched COVID and how it spreads, another student did number of cases worldwide, and another student did government. And with that, they each chose their path, and they interviewed people, so one person interviewed the chief of police, another person interviewed the fire department chief, another person interviewed the owner of firms, someone interviewed someone in South Africa via Zoom, and then one person interviewed the nurse, which was kind of fun. They wrote poems, they wrote cartoons, they did collages, they played gimmick, and now they're putting together a short paper about their angle to bring their studies together, and then lastly, they're going to present to the administration on Thursday and share what they learned with everyone. We went outdoors for recess, where students were laughing and playing with each other, and that was the highlight, the social interaction was clearly the best part for these students, and they were jazzed about talking and hanging out with each other, I would say. The students were incredibly compliant with handwashing, using hand sanitizer, maintaining that six-feet physical distance, and mask wearing. Adapting to these new protocols, I would say it was a non-issue, but I'm going to tell you, they were middle schoolers, and they've been studying this now for five weeks, and they realize those germs carry, those droplets are contagious. You know, they see the numbers, you know, they're on the John Hopkins website, and those numbers are increasing, so for them, they've got a vested interest, why I'm going to wash my hands, and why I'm going to be complying. Students were incredibly respectful with teachers and with their peers.
Challenges?
The biggest challenge was that three feet, mainly three-feet distance. If a student needs help, you look down, you go, "Okay, this is Marshall, how do I solve this and that problem?" It is incredibly challenging. The sitter said, "Okay, Johnny, I'm going to do this." And that was the hardest piece, and even now, because I tend to, I'm a close person just by personality, and to sit there and say, "Be mindful." And that was when I was asking the other teachers what they knew of the positives and negatives, and that was definitely something that was flagrant, because you want to be mindful, it's just that those germs travel. Occasionally, so that was the biggest challenge of anything. The hardest to understand, sometimes it was hard to understand students when they were wearing a mask, so you have to really have students articulate what they want to say, and you as a teacher have to articulate, and slow down, and make sure you're clear in your directions. Another student sneezed when I was next to the student, and they're like, "I told you, I told you." So that was another concern, but it was minor. And again, they have to wipe their nose. Again, reminding students to keep that six-feet distance just constantly, just to make sure that they're vigilant, because it is, it's a concern. And again, we're eating, snacking, drinking, again, that six-feet. But as I say, it was pretty infrequent in terms of having to remind them, they were really, truly, they're a great group of kids, they're hard workers, and they're, you know, happy to work, and they're happy to follow the protocols of our new rules. So in that regard, I, you know, it was infrequent sort of mind. So inclusion, I would say it was a great experience, it's been tremendous. I'd be curious from the student's point of view if they feel the same way. I've had parents email me and say it's been a lot of fun. But I say, I can't even reiterate, we had five students, they were five middle school students, and so as a result, I think it was, we were able to be successful in engaging and educating them, while maintaining physical distance and best practices put out by the CDC.
Excellent.
And then up here, you see, please check, after the please switch game, and then you won the calls, and then another example didn't work, but they did, they've had, it's been fun, I can't thank them, I hope it has been. Any questions?
No, you take your questions from these folks here.
You can ask, Laura. You can do it with Jimmy.
I don't know, maybe no one has questions.
No, I, do I have a question? You know, you offered some of the, you know, drawbacks, the challenges, if you will. You know, if you're looking and hearing these plans that are proposed, and you can kind of distill even just one, like takeaway to say, "Hey, listen, I'm hearing the plans like this, we did it this way," you know, what would be the one or two items that you would?
I would go probably hybrid personally, definitely, because I do honestly, I won't, I, I just know, you know, we were in the kindergarten, like, and right now, so before all, you know, the, everything did the walk-through, they had the five, they had just our five desks, okay, for our five students. Now this week, we've got 17 desks in there, and to me, that just seems really proud, because I, these middle schools, they're as big as me, right? So they're my size, and so to have 17 kids that are my size in a classroom, just seems like it's a lot of bodies in there. But so for me, and given how, knowing what I do about coronavirus at this point, and it just, that'd just be my personal, you know, opinion, but I, I don't know, it's just to me, that's what I think. But I will say, these kids, they're, they're resilient, and they are just fantastic, so. But I just feel like to have that many kids, it just seems like a lot of people in a classroom, because it's just a lot of close borders.
Thank you.
But that is just my opinion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You mentioned some challenges. Did you guys figure out solutions to those challenges as you were working, that it'd get easier to answer and help students as they were doing their work?
Yeah, I just think you just, you just learn, right? You just learn how it's going to be that three feet, and like, and how you, and you just realize, so I think you adapt to the, what the new normal is in terms of, okay, so maybe I'm almost a supposed person, or like one student, when one student knows, like, "Okay, we'll step back," you know, and so you just, so you adapt, and you accommodate the new stuff, right?
You said you've run the program for eight years?
Yeah, it's a long, it's been a long time.
So if, if this is the average amount of learning that occurs over the course of the eight years, how much less were you at, 100% again, were you at 95, 90%?
That's it, this year was the same.
No decrease in the amount of learning?
No, I can't, because they're too small, it's always small numbers, and so it's, even though you put in the protocols, wearing a mask, and washing hands, it's still, there's still learning to be had.
Great, thank you.
You know, there's still, if you told me that I have 10 kids or 20 kids, I think it might be different, but it's having, it's just always a small, it's always small numbers.
And these are, these are high, these are high-needs students, right? They, they're coming in because they need special instructions, so they need more extra time to get the instruction, get the directions.
Yeah.
Follow it, get more reminders, stay on task. This is the, this is the higher-need population.
Okay, we have a fifth school committee member who's on my phone. So Sarah, did you have a question?
I just wanted to follow up on the question about how the faculty, how did they adapt and, and learn through the process? I was curious about the kids, and how familiar with the routine, and how much more comfortable they got with the masks on, and all of that. How did that evolve over the?
Did you hear her?
So in regards to how comfortable students were with washing hands?
Yeah, and the evolution of the comfort through the five weeks, right, Sarah?
Yeah, yeah. Did the kids, did the kids get more comfortable with it?
Yes, I would say yes.
Were there fewer reminders and more, you know, were people, were people washing their hands and all that?
Okay, she's going to answer you now, go ahead.
So, so I'll just repeat the question to try and understand it.
Yeah.
Do you want to know if the students were more comfortable at the end of the program versus the beginning after wearing a mask every day?
Well, and all the safety protocols, the faculty and, and the students?
Uh, yes, I would say.
I'm curious more about the students.
Okay.
And how did they, how did they adapt to it?
She's more interested in how the students adapted.
Yeah, that's kind of, yeah. I would say they did okay, because I think it's what they're, they expected at this point. You know, it's not unusual for them to go out in public and have to wear a mask, and so I would say that, that yes, they were, but they came in wearing masks, and again, I think, like even this morning, with a student, and he was just like, "Mrs. Marshall, six feet, six feet." And I was like, "Let me out, can you know me, buddy?" And so I think that's also the, you know, I think that they, it's unfortunate, the new normal, which is what they're accustomed to, and so I think they're used to it, and so you don't, you know, and the other thing is that they wore off their mask breaks. If you need to leave and you want to take a mask break, you can take your mask off, or when you're not outside for recess, you can take your mask off if you wanted to. So those were the opportunities as well, but, but I would say that, you know, washing hands, I think just becomes the routine, just, it's like riding a bicycle, you know, learning how to ride a bike without training once you just go, and it's just the same. And there's nothing wrong with it, to wash your hands.
I have a question. Were you able to make a, set up an environment for students that everything was predictable? That they were stepping into school and they could predict, I'm sure that it was not from the day one, but that you were able to have predictability, what they're supposed to do in each space, how to move, how to behave? Is that, and did that help students, you know, when they, after they came in, did that help the students to feel more comfortable in their environment and with the teachers?
I would say yes. You know, today, the schedule's posted on the board in terms of what, so where I have it is, there's a schedule at the top of what, what the day's going to look like and what we're going to do, like, so it's the week's schedule, and then underneath each student, what they're going to be working on, and what their, what the expectation for each of them is, so they can always look at that and know what they were doing. But the day was structured the same pretty much every single day, what we were going to do, and they walked in the door 8:45 to like 9:05, 9:10, they knew we were going to be doing that, it's morning work, and that was what the expectation was. And so I think that routine was, Monday, we went to the library every day, and I think they knew that we were going to be at the library, and so therefore, that was again, that was kind of an established routine. So I think that they knew what the routine of school was, I think they knew what it looked like, and some ways we probably haven't changed a lot, but it was very much the same every day, in terms of what was, you know, to how it was going to roll out.
And I have another follow-up question. Were the students able to form deeper relationships with each other even though they were wearing masks? Were they able to socialize and, you know, we, we depend on those social cues from face.
Yes.
Did they come up with their own body language? What, how did they, how did that social behavior evolve? Did you, did it evolve? Did they, did they make those relationships, did it make some friendship? What did that look like?
I would say definitely, I don't put the mask prevention to talking with each other, I don't put the mask to hinder them from going out and playing, or chasing each other. Again, I just think it's, it's like put ninety shoes, it's just something that they do at this point, and they just, would just go out there, and we would be on the plaza, and they'd be running around, and unfortunately, some limitations, because, you know, historically, we've always, we've always mixed the grades, you know, we'd go out with all the grades, and we'd coordinate so that, you know, we could all be out in the plaza, everything in summer school, but given the circumstances, we can't do that, we were unable to do it this year. And so I think this year, it was, so they had the force to play with just each other, or, you know, hang out by themselves, depending what their choice was, but I think had no problem conversing with each other, or hanging, you know, talking with each other, and chasing each other, or running around, or looking for bodies, or whatever it is they wanted to do. So maybe they're, you know, you can't see their faces as well, but they, they were able to still interact.
Thank you, Laura.
And one last one. This is amazing, because we're getting so much. We, this is amazing, because we're getting so much real-life experience of what our students are going through and, and our staff members and how they are developing those routines. Were you able to share what you have done with the students? Is there sharing with other teachers of, of that wealth of information? What your days look like, the challenges, how kids, is there conversation?
Uh, not that I know, but we can certainly put that on the table.
Jim, was that presented?
So I think this is, so we're, they're still in the midst of the summer school year. I think Laura's gone back tomorrow, and we have our children.
Yeah, I'm not done yet, so I can't say, I can't say it's success yet, I have to be honest. I'm, I'm, I'm not a, I'm an optimist, but I...
Yeah, yeah, sure.
But this is your, like, this is the first opportunity to formally share kind of like positives and challenges and start having this conversation with the students.
Yeah, and the students will present to Jim and Lori and Matt on Thursday, and they can also be the judges in terms of whether that was a success or failure or how it all went. But it is, it's been, I don't know, it's been, it's been fascinating, I'll be honest. It's been a fun project.
So I'd want to say like, thank you for taking this, this summer of all summers, this night of all night, like you're here, storm, you're here, all summer with me. But in addition to that, right, the idea that as, as I hear you describe the program, right? Everyone knows we were just involved in a visioning, the visioning work this year, right? And we really wanted to work towards more interdisciplinary work, more thematic project-based work. Stuff that really incorporates and brings in the Carlisle components and the Carlisle expertise, whether it's cheap fish or cheap stuff. Like, and just hearing you explain that, I'm looking forward to Thursday, when we see like, that's exactly what everyone, you, like, summer school was designed around this year. Really, I'm pleased and proud and thank you for you and your best.
I hope the students, I, you know, I'll find out on Thursday, because I, every week, I try and give a little checklist to find out how they're doing, just to plan, look down and see if they're excited about the project designing. And, and sometimes we ask, "Is it now?", which is okay. But then I'll be curious about how they're feeling, because there was one student who was, was just really, really not excited about interviewing someone, but the reaction of when the student returned to the classroom spoke volumes, and then the student had to write a thank you note, and then again, that thank you note spoke volumes. I was like, wow, you know? To me, that is why I'm here. It was great, it was kind of exciting, so it's, it's those little things in life.
I was hoping to cross over to the Board of Health from one of her statements.
Yeah, sure.
So one of the things you said, I hear this a lot, I've heard a lot of teachers' voices concerned, it's the, and I, as I understand it, you know, there's, all other things being equal, three parameters: distance, mask-wearing, and time. And the time component, I really haven't heard considered a lot in a lot of these topics. In other words, like, there's a feeling, I think, of some teachers, like, they can't even walk by a student and be within six feet.
Yeah.
Having, I mean, but we hear it, right? I mean, like, I can't, like, I'll be trapped in the room, and so how do we, you know, from a Board of Health perspective, properly sort of like inform, give teachers guidelines about the third component? Again, that often I, I just don't find it as part of the conversation. Ma, you know, distance, mask-wearing, and time. And the time being like, yeah, it's okay to enter and be close to a student is what I understand for a few minutes. Just as, can't be ten, fifteen minutes. Go up, do a couple minutes, move on to the next student, perfectly fine. How do we, how do we sort of reconcile that time quotient and, you know, be effective about our communication to parents, teachers, faculty, everybody?
Well, so I think it's just what you're saying, you have to make it more part of the conversation. It's not, I mean, everything that we hear and share is, is as you said, mask and distancing. And that's what the measure is most of the time. But when we do our communication with agencies and we do our studying, and we, we know that the time is a major factor with it. So, I mean, I think your question is, how do we incorporate that, is that right?
Yeah, because one of the concerns is we can't maintain three-foot separation, but we're wearing masks. And so I'm trying to, I'm trying to, that, what you just said and what some of the concerns are from the teachers of not being able to maintain, when it seems like that's the expectation? But what I'm hearing is that it's not the expectation. You don't have to maintain separation if you're wearing the mask, as long as you keep the duration of time short. Is that making sense?
Yes.
And how do you, and how would you respond to that in terms of just like, the way you said it was difficult to do? Could you not educate within ten minutes, being next to a student?
Well, I think, I would say, I think it was, it's easier when with their older students, because I think that they are, they understand it a little bit more. I think it's harder when you've got the younger students who need to cuddle, because they, you know, someone who got their feelings hurt on the playground, or they needed a shoe tie, or, or they were misbehaving, or... And I think it becomes harder at the younger age of the lower elementary. Because I think that it just, I think it's a little bit more challenging. And I also think people come, come to the coronavirus with different, with a different lens. I think some people, they depend upon whether, you know, their background, I think that they're more worried. And so as a result, if they're more worried, they're not going to want to go closer to a student. Because if they're too close, then they might bring the coronavirus home to their, to a relative or see someone. So I think, I think that also plays into it, I could be mistaken, but I think that's also part of it. But I think, I just think for me, it's harder when they're smaller, because if I look at the kindergartners, you look how tiny they are and how needy they are, and it's not bad, it's where they are. And they're young kids, they're young children, they should be. And I think that's why it's harder to be able to be so, so, you know, so close or, you know, or sit there and say to them, "Well, you can stay three feet away," because it's just, I think it's harder.
Any, any response to that? Because I think it's an important topic, it comes up a lot.
Yeah, yeah, I think...
I guess I want to emphasize that this is, this is a management of risk, it's not an elimination of risk. We're never going to do that. And so there's a number of factors to be considered when we're, when we're looking at this. I think the studies we see, a lot of them are emerging studies, because they're such a fast pace to learn what we can. So not all of them are peer-reviewed, or many of them aren't peer-reviewed, and so take it for what it's worth. But the data's starting to show that, that it's very difficult to pass this virus from a small child to anyone else. And I don't, Todd may need to speak to this, but I think it has to do with their immune systems and developing a viral load in a given volume and distance and time and all the other things that we're talking about considering. So I think it's important to understand that really the teachers are the ones we're worried about. We're worried about all of them, but the risk is higher with the older you get. And so maintaining that distance and time, really, of course, the masks are going to be a given, but the distance and the time are the things that need to be managed, and I think it's in good hands, because I think the teachers are going to be very cognizant of that, whereas the kids are so enthusiastic and social that it may be a little less with them. But as long as the teachers are the gatekeepers of those things, I think, I think that's going to help reduce the risk.
Are there any guidelines that you've seen, or just to make that sort of the time cognitive? Like, I've been close to this person for a amount of time without, you know, stopwatches and all, like, infrastructure that makes it feel like mechanical? Is there anything you've seen about how you can be effective about just monitoring the time?
I haven't seen any of that.
No, I haven't seen anything like that. I mean, one thing you have to consider is, you know, somebody is sitting in a classroom in a seat, that the aerosol doesn't stay within six feet, it's not like a six-foot cloud around them. And maybe for a few minutes, but if you're sitting for half an hour, that if they had aerosols to drop, it's those could migrate, you know, potentially all around the classroom, depending on, you know, circulation-wise. So I don't think we should fear that they're going to see a child, like, you know, they're coming into, you know, essentially, you know, a sphere where, you know, you have this, you imagine, you shouldn't imagine there's a density of particles next to the child that, you know, kind of fans out like that. It's really just, you know, just, you know, kind of moving around, not, not staying, you know, really close to somebody in case they sneeze or, you know, their mask is loose or something like that.
Helpful, thank you.
Yeah, it's really just more than close to those systems, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So don't think of people as, as magnets.
Yep, great.
Does fresh air circulation, open windows, we looked at actually the classrooms, and all the windows were open in most of the classrooms. Does that improve, that this help in dispersal, and does this help in, in keeping everybody safe? We certainly can do that September, October, and probably till November. And we can probably ventilate during the breaks the rooms completely, right? It will cost us more.
How to make air and then replacing the air is kind of, you know, the most important thing. And having the fresh air is better than recirculated air. So people have it close to like an HVAC system, and the, the school is, you know, not as, you know, HVAC-friendly as, you know, other schools. You know, in that situation, they could, you know, if these have the filters, these high, you know, filters into, you know, their circulation system. But having, you know, the fresh air, at least, you know, you have, you know, brandy air mixing with that. From that, we were talking about before, you know, you know, you're reducing that volume of potential aerosol and diluting it more, so the fresh air is the best solution.
There, there are studies that are being done, have been done, that, that look at aerosols and from aerosols all the way to the bigger particles, and how long they stay in the air and distances required to avoid contact with either, you know, it's a gradual scale. But it's been shown that airflow, increased airflow really helps that situation, because it moves it on the way, and so you're exposed for less time to less dense, you know, particle or aerosol clouds.
Can we, can I just, I apologize. I know, we've been discussing this for quite some time, but I just want to thank Laura and give her the opportunity to only get some rest.
You know, you asked me my, my favorite model, I think it has to be proposed. What I would do if I lived in a dream world to put together is I would find the teachers who want to teach remote, to pair them up with people who are concerned about their health or have high risk, and put Max down with remote learners, and then have people want to come to school and then that's done. I think that would be, you know, I think that would be ideal, but that would be my idea.
Thank you for sharing.
So all the models are not often...
Laura, I just wanted to add that I think it was a stroke of brilliance on your part to have the children study COVID.
No, I have, I have to be honest, this was Lori's criticism, I can't take the credit. She came and she said, "Would we do this?", and so it was, it was her idea.
But I would say that that should be explored no matter which model we have, because I think that, you know, I passed a group of middle or freshman, young high school students in the, on my way in, and not one of them had a mask on.
Oh, right.
And so I think that, I think that it would, the exercise of having kids get their own information about the situation is much more powerful than the bits and snags that they get from home.
I don't know, I'm curious to see how, like, they, I think it's interesting. And for the fact that you had the opportunity to talk to, like, the lady, you know, the student talked to Matt Hurwick, who, you know, owns burns, again, just give him the perspective of what it's like to be a business owner or the fire chief, and his perspective on his, what he's felt, it's interesting. The fact that he wants to turn for our vaccines, you know, who knows? You know?
Yeah.
It's just interesting what they're curious about, it's, it's interesting, it's fun.
Thank you so much.
We have ambassadors, we have now middle school ambassadors that can come back to school
To present.
and, and present and teach others.
Have to present early.
Yes, they're the brand setters in their school right now.
Yeah.
Understanding.
I don't know, it's just interesting, and they're always curious about the numbers, because it is, and what country is doing well, what country isn't.
Excellent.
It is, it's, I don't know, it's good stuff, I don't know, it's an interesting time, not always fun, it's interesting.
Thank you so much for the program and for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. All right, so I think I'd like, now I'd like to come to us, and if there's any part of a thing that you wished that you could have said, but you can't say because we're not an open meeting, now we're an open meeting, share away.
Could we still ask Jim a few more questions about the models?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Yeah, I just want Laura to be able to go home and get ready for tomorrow.
Yep.
Thank you for coordinating that.
Absolutely, good people.
Yeah, so I, I actually had some, some questions, because as we are looking at...
A little louder, honey, just because...
So I, I had a question, I had some questions, because as we are looking at the, we are actually really looking at two models. And the remote has to happen, absolutely has to happen, because we will have families that will need to opt out from sending their kids to school because of their personal health or otherwise situation. So that will have, that is definitely a go. So we are looking at the hybrid model and the full in-person model. And we should look at, you know, if you're looking at the hybrid model, what are the pros and cons and what it gives us in terms of safety, education, and wellbeing for our students? If you're looking at the in-person, full in-person model, now with six feet, full six feet, and all the distancing and all the protocols, what does that give us in terms of the, the level of education that we are able to provide our students, safety, and of course, wellbeing?
Yeah, so it would be nice if we could say, we're looking at two models, but we're really still looking at three plus, right? Because the remote model will be different depending on whether our whole school is in remote model or if we're trying to meet the needs of families who've decided to go remote while the rest of us are in person, right? And Laura alluded to, like, if given her druthers, she would like, those folks who want to teach remotely can teach remotely, and those folks who want to come to school could do. That would be, if, if that could work out very smoothly, that would be wonderful. But based on the initial data we got from families and from faculty, it didn't line up in that way to support that. I think some districts have an economy of scale where they can make that work, but...
Thank you for clarification, because that was not clear.
Yeah, it's just, it's really, it's, it's, so even if we, as we have the conversation around which model we should open in, or how we make a determination of which model we should start with, or how we transition to other models, we still have that option for parents who choose to go remote. We have to manage that, which is an additional challenge. But I think you're right, I think it is worth having the conversation around benefits of each model. And I think as you, as you talk with, the benefits are probably can be described differently by different people. I think as we look at the full in-person, to bring all the students in and have everybody there for the four and a half days that we would be looking at, like, we're looking at Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and half a day each Wednesday to allow time for, for training and planning and such. There would be a great deal more instructional time there than if we went with the two-day model, like the two days in, half a day remote, which would be our, our hybrid model. And then we have the, we have, we have the, the remote model, if we're all full of remote, we know that will be much more robust than it was last year, but it will continue to be remote. And, and we understand that, as we've understood from the beginning, remote isn't, the remote experience isn't the same as the in-person experience, right? What we were doing last February, prior to all this, with our students coming into person, we believe that was, that was the best model at that time, right? If we had thought remote, we would have chosen that prior to it, but that's not the space we're in. So I think everybody's got to balance, we have this understanding of which, which approach is best instructionally, pedagogically, and therefore for student learning. But now you're confronting with, with safety, right? Like, how do we balance the safety side? And, and really, we could discuss with the Board of Health, like, some, some people will say, yeah, there's a great deal more risk when you're in person than when you're remote, right? There's, there's much more risk when you're in person, but there's more benefit. But then risks might not be reduced that much when you're in hybrid as opposed to when you're in full remote. Like, that's part of the conversation. I'd be happy to hear what, what the Board of Health may...
I, I think it's a great point. I've heard that from a lot of people, that there's a perception that the, that we'd love to get the Board of Health's perspective on, that hybrid is like half the risk of the four and a half day model? What's, what's your take on the risk difference between the two models of having kids in school, all teachers five days, kids two days, versus four and a half days here?
So, you know, Todd may be able to speak to this a little better, but my idea is that the hybrid model is not half. It's, I don't see much of a reduction in risk with hybrid model, because you're still bringing all these kids together. Unless there's more people that stay remote. And Jim, I'm not sure how all that would work with numbers in classrooms and things like that with the hybrid model, but you're still bringing all these students together and faculty there, and it's just happening less days, but the exposure is there. So you're still there for the same time each day, I believe, but they're not shorter days, right? So, yeah, definitely, I mean, I think it doesn't equate to a half, halving the risk, but what do you think, Todd?
I would say, you know, if you're looking at the faculty risk, which I think is a significant one, is that, you know, if I had a child that was infected with COVID, and they came Tuesday and Friday, they're still in that closed classroom space and that, that's still, that risk to that faculty in there. Whether you have half an number of students or not, you still have, you know, pretty good a time, I'm talking about the year. But that said, I wouldn't, you know, I'm, I'm still not trying to come up with a fear on this, and I think people are doing, you know, a much better job of masks over, you know, even from the spring year through the summer. I think... even from the spring year through the summer, I think that the kids are getting very good wearing the masks. With, you know, with good proper mask wearing, I said this last night, that, you know, you're awesome, you know, the aerosols, if you have, you know, a good close fitting mask, it's pretty minimal with, with fresh air.
So just for clarity, the hybrid model would allow us to have literally half the children in the classroom?
That's true, but if you have the infected person, there's someone who's asymptomatic and, you know, in that, that half, that faculty risk or the teacher.
Is the same.
It'd be the same teacher.
Yeah.
Marginal risk difference between the two.
Because you realize there's going to be just, specifically there'll be one kid that's going to be, you know, infected in a grade or something like that anyway. It's not going to be three or four in class.
I have a question. What happens the two and a half days when these kids are going home and they need a childcare provider, and we have people coming from outside of the town to teach their kids?
Well, that's the other thing too, it's like, who's taking care of those kids? And where are they living? And what are they bringing in on their days in?
Yeah, so you have more.
Or people are forming their own COVID pods.
Right.
And grouping kids in their own homes, bringing the childcare, the teacher, the instructor, the young college students, their home telecommuting, because some, you know, NYU, they might as well said.
So you could have higher home risk, you know, infections during the off days, because the parents have seen, you know, that they really want their kid taught on the thing, right?
Yeah, or it may just be a childcare issue, people go to work, they just need someone to supervise, to supervise their children.
And I can say, I don't want to raise my parents' side, but you know, what we did see from the fall, so we saw the pass fail, is that, you know, now they're moving to a grade-based system, and I think the fear is that my child did okay, you know, they were a little past line, but now I feel for the fall, I better work harder, so that maybe, you know, bring more people in there to try and compensate for this.
True, true.
No, actually, it was about the, with hybrid, it'd be half the number of students, but then knowing that it's the same teacher that answered my question.
Yeah.
And I did have a question about classroom management in the fully in-person model. And I forget, it was a question that you brought up, Jack, or it was something Laura said, but with, with kids, especially in the younger grades, how do you foresee, how many more people we need to have in the classroom, or do you foresee any challenges with classroom management, with being kids? I don't want to say it that way, but do you know what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I would say yes to everything, like, anything you're insinuating it, yes, we will need more people to supervise as we try to bring people out, whether it's outdoors or indoors. Yes, there's going to be additional challenges, right? And I think what we heard from Laura though, also was like, people learn, people become accustomed to how things work. They will, there's, as you bring more people in, that's an additional concern, right? If we, we really don't have enough space to bring additional adults into that classroom space.
We need controlling how many versus we don't know if they're, you know, where they're going.
Yeah, we would, I want to say, yeah, I think we would, yeah, we would control how many students, how many adult helpers we bring into the space. We know we will need some additional people to make it work, but we also need to manage that, so we don't have additional exposures. Or, as we talked, we had the conversation around volunteers, we would like the volunteers to come from our Carlisle community, where like the homes where we already know we're connected, or where we'd look to have people come from outside this community and pierce that bubble. So I think that was part of the conversation. We know we need additional support, we'd like the support to come from inside the bubbles so that we can help manage the, this, you know, this spreading out of children, whether they're indoors in the cafeteria, whether they're outdoors or what we have.
I'd like to just come back to the discussion we were just having about what can happen on the off days with the hybrid, because I've heard of, you know, even additional facilities and daycares popping up in towns that are going the hybrid way to take care of these kids and the cross-pollinization that, and, and I just want to like come back to this point, that what you were saying seemed to indicate that there are scenarios, depending on behaviors outside of school, that could actually make the hybrid model more risky because of cross-pollinization that was, that's possible?
Yeah, I was also thinking the parents, you know, they have to take the kids with them on errands, then maybe, you know, go in the grocery store with them and something, you know, you wouldn't see on a regular school day.
Yep, helpful, okay. Coming back to this distance mask time, we're here, six feet apart, not wearing masks. We go to restaurants, we sit down, I go to work every day, I sit in an office six feet apart from my colleague, once we're in the office, I take my mask off. I had a chance to talk to a New Hampshire state epidemiologist, and I asked, what is the risk difference between sitting six feet apart like we are and wearing a mask versus not wearing a mask? And she was unable to quantify it. What's your comment about, she saw no difference in the risk. The two of us holding masks on and the two of us having masks off, that's the whole deal behind the six feet.
Well, there's definitely a risk with a mask off, because you know, if you're shedding particles, you know, it's circulating around. The idea of by having an open space like this and six feet apart, and so you know, if you have particles, they're being diluted, and let's just say you need to inhale, you know, 10,000 particles, you might get, you know, 20, 30 particles flying around from something else. So having the mask on definitely helps, I would never encourage having a mask off in a closed system like, like a classroom. So if we had to help us be in one of the classrooms, there's no way I would have the mask off right now.
Helpful, helpful. I think that's one of the things, it's like, well, when do I know is, what's the density in a room that starts to make it unsafe?
Yep.
I mean, here it's safe, I mean, we're all comfortable, and what, at what point, I mean, say only 10 kids come back, I mean, extreme example, you just have a teacher and two kids.
Yep.
Should they be wearing masks or not? And then as you get more and more kids, at some point, then the mask wearing, even though it's six feet, is really best protocol because it, it helps. But I don't know where that threshold is, when we go over that tipping point that.
But you want to err on the safe side.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great question, but I haven't seen anything, I don't think you have, Todd, that qualifies that at this point.
Okay.
But, you know, there's no scale or no, no.
Yeah, I think that's one of the problems, is we don't, we don't know a lot of these answers, we're doing our best.
Yeah. Gee, Barry, and we've read a lot on particles, I mean, you know, when somebody sneezes without a mask, you know, they can go 18 feet away, the particles. There's good, you know, air visualization tracer studies that show sneezes versus a cough versus, so there's some great papers on that, but I haven't seen any kind of closed room ones in any, you know, either human studies or animal studies.
Thank you, helpful.
I think some of the questions I have, I think more to do between, and I know we talked last week, between, transitioning between in-person to online or hybrid to online and the changing curriculum, but it sounded like that shouldn't be an issue. Or, like, what are some of the challenges around that?
I hate to say anything won't be an issue.
Well, yeah. So it was a little concerning, it just sounded like good.
But I think, I think the idea that we, if we have the three plans, right, we understand what the three plans are, we should be able to transition pretty fluidly between, from one plan to the other. If we understand what those prompts are going to be, that are going to make us go from one plan to the next, I think that's an important part. But, but I think there's still a great deal of work, right, for our faculty and staff to do. Luckily, we have some days for the summer, and we have some days we're going to have media, really to make sure that everything is firmly in place for the in-person model and for the remote model. And I think they, we have great faculty and staff, they understand education, they understand teaching and learning, and they will be able to make it work as we need to have it work, so that we can open up and learn. In whichever model we charge them with, and we've charged them with developing approaches to all three, I think when we do it.
That's been a huge question, is shifting between models, for sure. We know the how, but the what, when we do it and what we use.
Prompt, the prompt, right.
I have another question. What are the unique needs of, we are looking at two populations, right? So elementary students, what do they need to learn? Do they need supervision? Can we, you know, is it possible to really be effective to provide instruction without the parents there to engage the student over the remote learning, whether it's paper or, you know, send packets or, or the Zoom or Google Classroom, whatever, CISA, whatever we are using? How does this look from that standpoint?
I think, I think based on my impression of what I've heard from faculty and staff around remote learning this past spring, I think for our youngest, for our youngest students, kindergarten, first grade, the, what took place at the Zoom was really just some social emotional gathering together and really just connecting with one another, right? And, and they were really successful, I sat in a number of those sessions and saw that take place. But it's really a challenge to deliver instruction in that mode. I think they did set up some of that asynchronous instruction that students could view and watch, but it's, imagine trying to manage 17 children in a classroom in front of you, when you can speak to them, and you can move them around, you can engage them when you need to, you know, distract, get them back on task, and then try to manage those same 17 children when you have none of those strategies at your disposal because they are all remote. So it really falls to the parents to be able to be there and, and support the learning and even the social emotional connection. It falls to the parents to make sure that the students are there and tuned in, totally engaged. So that, that's one of the hardest things for our youngest students, it really is critical for us to have the opportunity to have them in-person so that we can work with them. And I would say similarly, it's, it's important for our middle school students, I mean, I think everyone would agree that in-person is the best approach, it's important for our middle schools, but they are a little older, they have a little more independence, they can be charged with doing things, and we'll find that there'll be a percentage of students there who will, who are already, you know, mature beyond their years and have the interest and can do things independently. But we also know there are children there, like many of us, who would need a little more coaxing and engagement and can really benefit from that, what you get from your teacher when you're in-person, and that willingness to engage and that interest and that connection.
Yeah, and I believe that if that becomes a necessity, or if that's where we choose to go, I think that that is, you know, I've said it before, we have an amazing group of creative teachers. We just saw what Laura did by turning this situation into a really valuable experience for, for five children in the middle school. I think that, once you define the problem, these teachers will attack the problem. So if, if there's, there are children who don't find it difficult to get engaged, they're going to be creative about ways to engage these kids. It's not going to be 100%, you can't do the same education virtually that you can do in a classroom. But if that's the way we're going to go, then there are concessions that need to be made. And, you know, this is the new normal, and we're all trying to figure out what that is, but there are parameters that we just are not in control of. And if it means that we can't be, if we have to be virtual, then we have to find tools and ways to make that the most robust experience for our students and manageable for our faculty.
Question to all committee members, go ahead, Sarah.
Yes, Sarah, go.
Hi, I'm sorry, you know, I'm trying to listen on the computer where I can hear everybody, and I might be delayed. But I think what I'm following up on maybe is Christine's question, you know, about like that the remote is not going to be the same as in-person. I'm trying to understand, I mean, after our walkthrough yesterday, I'm trying to understand what the in-person is really going to look and feel like, to what extent is it going to approximate what we know and love of Carlisle? And how do our teachers, like, you know, are our teachers ready to pivot to this, to the old school classroom model, right?
Yeah, Jim, I mean, you know, I think we run into this, like, it's, it's not going to be like it was. That's a given, it's not going to be like it was. I think the question then becomes, what's the comparative? So yeah, it's not going to be like it was, but the alternative to not being this good is X. It's, there's all these new relative points of like, what's, what's it like at what it was, and is that still better than what we could do, and are we comparing something to nothing? And how do you, it's a great question, I mean, how would you sort of answer that it's not going to be like it was?
It's a great, like, that is a great question, yeah, I wish I had a great answer for it. I think that's, so, so I think you can sit here and say that in-person, everyone accepts, like, if it was last February, in-person instruction is the thing that is the best project. There's no question. I think one of the challenges we have with there are folks now who say like, yeah, we get that, but we're really concerned about the safety of the people we're putting into those spaces, students, faculty, staff, and there. So we've taken these, we've taken these steps, and we've created this, this environment now with the physical distancing, with the six-foot physical distancing, and with some structures kind of in the back of our educators' minds, understanding like, hmm, so small group instruction, as I know it has been in the past, as I know like that's a really important way that I teach reading, is not going to be what it was before. So we're losing, yeah, there's, there's, there's a trade-off. We are losing, even in-person, some of those, those important pieces that we know have always been successful. And I think one of the challenges, Russ, kind of as Laura did in the summer program with the other, is we have to have those opportunities if we're in-person to see, okay, what is going to work in this new, what will work in this new environment? If we can come together safely in this new environment, and now we're placed in this new environment, what is going to be my approach? It probably won't be what it was in February, which I think was probably the best approach we could possibly, we, we were doing what we thought was best, we wouldn't have been not doing what we thought was best, but now what, what will be successful, what will help our students? I don't have the exact answer of what the percentage decrease is going to be from full in-person February to full in-person if we were to do that this September, I don't know. I would think that people would say it's probably, it's significant, like, it's not, it's not like 2%, 3%, we're talking a significant percentage, but is it 50% or is it 30%? I'm not sure.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I think what I'm trying to understand is, I mean, from the way that I, I experienced the walkthrough, it was kind of that the students are in their seats, the teacher is up front, stuff is happening on the active board, you'll have classroom conversation and stuff, but collaboration and, and hands-on projects and all that kind of stuff, we're not at a stage where we can even think about something like that. So I'm trying to understand, what's the difference, I mean, do we, do we understand what the different experience is for a remote learner? So for a remote learner is participating virtually in this classroom, right? Is, is watching the classroom and has an opportunity to speak. What's the difference for the in-person versus the remote learner?
I guess I would say initially, like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, we have an outstanding faculty and staff that are very creative, I wouldn't assume that instruction is going to be a certain particular way based upon the setup of the classroom. So like the idea of, of saying we won't be able to do project-based or collaborative work, I think our teachers are creative enough to be able to do that, whether we're doing that via their, via their Chromebooks or outdoors or, like, there are opportunities, and those opportunities may arise similarly in remote learning too, right? So there may be that possibility there. So I would say, I just wouldn't say like, this is the way it has to be in this situation. There will definitely be changes, there will definitely be trade-offs, and I am not here to say that it will be exactly the way it was if we are in-person, the way it was last February. But I think we have to, our, our educators will be creative and will find ways to, to pursue the vision we have for our children's education, and if that is, you know, project-based and collaborative and communication, they will find ways under the parameters that we, we've established to make that. Will it be as easy? Will it be as frequent? Will it be as smooth as simple as it was previously? Probably not.
No, but I would also say this, that just like with this whole situation around the world, we, we don't have the answers. But when we were on the tour, we were in one of the kindergarten rooms, and one of the faculty raised the question about, well, the cubbies are not going to be there, but when they come in with their snow pants and their snow jacket and their boots and their mittens and their hats and their scarves, what happens then? And we didn't have that answer when we came in the room. And one of the faculty members looked at the desk and she said, oh, look at this, there's a rail that runs all the way around the desk. Jim, we need hooks. We're going to hook their pants on the, so it's a small thing, it's not an educational thing, but that's the thing I see in our faculty, that's, that, they, they did two parades for our children because they really missed our children. And our children were at the parades because they missed their teachers. So I, I think that if we can create a safe environment, then the creativity is going to bloom, because that's the nature of these educators. It just, we just have to find a way to do it so they're safe.
And I do, I just want to say, because I know they're probably watching, right? So the idea that just because we're saying that we will be able, our educators will be able to come up with solutions to these situations, doesn't mean I'm denying anyone's anxiety about returning to school.
No.
Like, I hear that, that is a reality, that people have concerns.
Yeah, the first hurdle is safety.
Yes, I just want to make sure like, it doesn't get misunderstood that somehow I'm saying that all teachers are on board for in-person, they're going to make it happen.
I totally agree, because that's not the case.
Just questions for committee members, kind of two questions that I'm thinking about. One is misconceptions we've heard from people that are talking about it that I think we need to make sure get clear. One of them is, two of them today, I think I've heard from parents today, still not aware that there are doing things like buying tents and creating opportunities outside. Even today, there's still that information isn't out there. The fact that Jim and Matt and Dennett have gone the extra mile with tape measures and gone from three feet to six feet. A lot of parents still don't know that, I've heard that twice.
If it were full in-time school...
It's six, it's six.
It's six feet.
It's six feet, not three feet.
There's one classroom that I think is six by five, but everyone else is.
Nope.
Nope, fixed it.
So just so we're clear, we were never at three feet. But we were using the state's minimum three feet to create classroom spaces that we thought were more functional.
Yep.
Like, because it created space at the front for the teacher to do the things. But now, we are committed to having the six-foot distance between the desks in all the classrooms. And if that means, and I said this in some post-game questions, and we set up the classrooms based on our current enrollment, right? How many kids, if they all showed up on the first day of school, this is how many students would be in the class. One of our challenges is right now, our seventh grade class, our enrollment is up above eighty, right? So those are, so that's a good number. Like, if this was last February, and you were looking for more students, that would be a positive thing. But that's created a challenge. So if everyone shows up on that first day of school, we're dealing with, I think, eighty-one, eighty-two students in the seventh grade class. We are unable to do that in the classrooms where the seventh grade meets present. But that doesn't mean we have the engineering room, we have the community room, we have the space in the back of the auditorium. We'd be looking at the engineering room, community room as the places we would create the seventh grade classrooms if in fact we had that number over eighty. But we're also aware that there may be families who don't send their children, that might bring those numbers down, which in those classrooms would allow us to stay in the seventh grade spaces. And in our other classrooms would allow for more room within those classrooms for teachers to move around and students.
Yes, so Jim, also, could you address the fact that in middle school and with specials, how those are going to happen in terms of typically, middle school students move from subject to subject in a different room? But that's not going to be the case.
So our conversation, so with regard to changing in middle school, where usually we have the students who move from their English class to their math class and science class, we're looking at the approach where the teacher will push into those classrooms so it reduces the amount of movement taking place in the hallway. When it comes to specials, we're also looking at having specials, we push into those spaces where appropriate. But we will have places like rural language, where we may have students move off to the language, or PE. Again, an opportunity to go outdoors, we'll be looking at that option. Then we have other specials that we need to be a little more cautious of. We don't want some people to be like a hyperlink or a superlink or however the language is, someone who may go into every classroom.
Right.
Right? And then we have this superperson that's been in contact with the whole school over the period of five days. So we might, we're seeking ways to allow them to provide instruction, but we may have remote instruction for some of that, even though the person's in school, right? Just to make sure we can manage our cohorts, our class groups, and not have that super exposure. Which of course will mean we need additional coverage in those classrooms. If that instructor's not there and our teachers are on their planning time, then we need folks to be in those spaces to provide the adult presence as the lesson handler.
Right.
Is that what you were asking about?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Are there any other topics besides the tents, the three-six-foot, that you've heard from parents that are, that are in the plan and addressed, but there's a gap between what we believe is knowledge and what is being proposed? That can, could, should be discussed, make sure people that are listening know about?
Yeah, I have not.
Okay.
The buses, they have, they have one, I remember touring the bus. They have one space left according to this distancing for a monitor. So that's correct, right? So we have...
So let me share some of the conversations from last night, with the Board of Health. So for those folks who came to the tour, for many people, one of the most awkward moments on the tour was when we got on the bus. So the state has given us guidelines for the bus, it has pretty much a student, each seat has one student. Traditionally, we could have two, sometimes three, in the elementary school students at the seat. But the state's guidelines said one person per seat. So if we set up the exits in the seats and let folks came onto the bus, filed in, filled in from the back forward, and then when we got off, filed off from the front to the back, so that we'd have less crossing. But in those moments that we sat in the chairs, I could sense that there was anxiety on many people's parts because we were in a close proximity. Even though we are, well, some of us are larger than our elementary, middle school students, and we could see over those high chairs, there was this discomfort. I would also, so that was, whichever tour you're on, you felt that, you saw that. Then last night in the conversation with the Board of Health, the Board of Health also expressed the concern that the distancing established by the state guidelines didn't leave them feeling comfortable, if I can paraphrase it, as our conversation was. And I think they were considering giving us additional guidelines around distancing on the buses to make that, you know, comfortable for them. I think it's important for us to recognize that this is a collaborative effort with the Board of Health, that's why I'm here. I appreciate you guys on the topic. They have a great deal of input, this is really a local, this is all local decision-making. We feel like to some extent, we've been abandoned by the state, and we're going to make this decision locally, and the Board of Health is part of that.
Does that mean like, we have six buses now and we now need...
So today, I drafted a couple of surveys to send out, one for families and one for faculty and staff. And kind of sent those out to a couple of folks to look at and provide feedback on. And one of those is really looking, and one of the questions on the family survey really speaks directly to transportation. It's similar in Concord and CCH yesterday did the same thing. Like, we're looking to identify who are those folks who absolutely it's a necessity for them to have transportation? If they cannot find another means of getting their child to school on a daily basis, right? If they have another means of doing that, like, we're going to ask that they exercise that other means because we're really going to be in a crunch for space on the buses under the protocols that make everybody feel comfortable, right? If we all feel comfortable, that's the protocol, we're going to go with that. And the first step is seeing, okay, what is our need? And then from there, we'll see, do we have to make adjustments or speak with Bedford Charter or try to figure out how we can make work whatever we see on the horizon.
You guys want to say anything about it? You don't have to, but about the buses.
Well, as Jim mentioned, we had a good conversation about it last night, and I think he summed it up well. We're not comfortable with it. I know a consideration is the high tops of the seats are going to block some flow to communicate between students, but at the same time, it's really only about a two-foot distance from head to head. So airflow is important, I think that windows can be open, but depending on weather, that could be a very awkward situation. So, you know, as we discussed last night, I thought we could, we could take a look at whether every other seat made a difference and, you know, what parents really needed.
Get there, yep.
I remember the bus driver, she said that even if it's raining, they are still able to open the, all the windows on the bus, just a snitch, just to allow, just to allow more fresh air to come in.
Yeah. No, she'd say that.
So we're paying attention.
So I have a question about quarantining. I don't want to change topics, I want to keep going on the bus. Quarantine, I have a question, if a teacher were to test positive, and they would then need to quarantine for two weeks, is that correct? And would the whole class also need to quarantine?
Okay.
Oh, that's a different...
No, I apologize, I kind of missed the first part of this one.
Oh, sorry, I had a question about quarantine and what's the protocol there? I guess we probably don't be in school at that point.
No, we could be, so I think, and I'll, I think if you test positive, how you are handled is different than the people who are exposed to, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, you know, what's the protocol?
I think there's a ten-day number, like, if you test positive, I think it was ten days, there's some number of ten days that after ten days, you could return on a negative, get a negative test, maybe.
Yeah, there's also just introducing the contact tracing too. But I don't think we're going to say that, you know, one person was six feet away and one person was eight feet away so that they're safe and they stay in the classroom. I don't think we want to play, just as we talked about with the air, you know, circulation, we don't want to play that game.
Oh.
Generator, right? We got a generator?
We got a generator.
Sarah, the power just went out. There we are. Sarah, the power just came back.
So I think to your point, so, so how that handles, but if there is a positive case, there's all the guidelines from the state for COVID scenarios. So if we have a student or faculty member who is in a room with someone who has tested positive, right? If they're in that room because they were in English class or because they're in the third grade group, we would say, our practice would be, everybody in that room, you've had, you know, close contacts. You are going to be quarantined for fourteen days. And there is no testing to get you out of that quarantine. You can't say, well, I got a negative test five days from now. That negative test tells where you are now, but we know it can incubate for up to fourteen days. So a fourteen-day quarantine will be in place and we'll kind of assess on that roll in fashion. And so, and we actually have some thoughts around frameworks, around like, how does, what's going to help us make those decisions to go out of school?
Yeah, that's another question.
So, so let's, I think this is a good time. Let's segue into the framework that you were just referring to, and then we can, because I think that it lends a great framework to move forward.
I'm just hoping to follow up on your notes. I don't know, I think around America's power.
Could I just ask one question?
Yeah, sure.
What is the typical or the average time of a school bus ride?
The bus drivers had about thirty minutes.
Okay.
The question was, how long is a typical bus ride? So that's each way. And there are two runs, they do the elementary school and then they do the middle school.
I'm just thinking of that whole, you know, time factor as well as the distance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was somewhat to my question on the bus yesterday about like repositioning kids. Like, after fifteen minutes, okay, you've all been in this, being able to redistribute the kids on some safe parking lot to extend the amount of time and our ability to transport kids safely. Yeah.
So would you, Jack, can we just discuss?
We're just talking about the transportation and time and, you asked how long the bus rides are. I think that we established that the average bus ride is about thirty minutes in the town. And so thinking about the fifteen-minute exposure and how we can get there.
I wonder how much that would change with fewer kids because of the routes.
Yeah, true. That's very true, it would be a shorter time because they're not stopping as often.
We're on one of the first stops.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So I guess one of the...
Sorry, before you go, do you mind telling us what's the percentage of families that want to come back in person? Because Amanda just mentioned that we might actually not have full buses, right? We might not have everyone wanting to, yeah, come into school. What is the survey so far?
So the data that we gathered two and a half weeks ago now, which is probably like ancient data, right? It was about eighty-seven percent of the families responded they would send their child for in-person schooling, whether it was the hybrid or whether it was full in-person. So I think that's one of the pieces we have to peel back from the family. This is one of the few things, like, given that our reopening plans are such, you know, if we are in full in-person, how will you respond to them? Will you or will you not? If we are a hybrid, will you or will you not? If we are full remote, there's another question around that. And then a question about like, are you planning to access just the remote regardless of which one of those? But like, that and the transportation, and we need to have feedback, and then we got to work with the communication. So we need to get what other questions might we want to bake into this? But that's some of the, that's the most important information we can get this many times. Because I know the data we have from two and a half weeks ago, it's, everything's full. People may have changed their mind.
To the point you made yesterday, Jim, when we were touring also, that we can't just bank on it. Right? Because most of it suggests like, schools open at some level, and then people start to see how things are going on and they may change their minds. So we can't rely, rely on X percentage either being here or not being here. We kind of always have to have like, everybody's here plan to some degree. And or, and all reasonable is to ask parents to commit, like, I will transport my kids for the...
Well, to be honest with you, Concord did just that. But Concord surveyed who would be using the bus, and they said, if you're choosing to drive your child to and from school, we'd like you to commit to that.
Commit to it, okay.
And, I mean, you hate to say that, but, but we suddenly can't have thirty kids decide to take the bus because then it's not the same scenario that we've provided. I think the other things around the bus are that there is somewhere a rule in the books that if you live within a certain distance of the school, that we can't guarantee the bus. This is not a Carlisle rule, this is a state rule. I don't think Carlisle ever picks up on that rule. But we may, if we, we may have to implement that so that we can make the right numbers for the buses. But we don't know, we got to wait till the survey comes out and see what we get.
And the last bus survey, was it a hundred and thirty students? What was the number?
So we had probably, after we took out all the duplicates, actually Christine took out. We have a five hundred of our six hundred and ten student, this is individual, our students' responses. And of that five hundred, we had about a hundred and thirty folk, thirty folk said that they would choose the bus transportation. So if that broke out evenly, that's like sixty-five kids each run, the elementary run, middle school run. Like, and even with the new, even with that new measurement that we're kind of collaborating with the Board of Health on, like, we might be able to come really close to that number. Like, but that's, but we still got a hundred people that haven't responded.
There'll be one kid in a plastic bubble.
So one of the challenges we've had since we started talking about reopening is like, when? When do we, what would prompt us to reopen? Then they said, well, come up with three models. It's like, okay, great, what's going to prompt us to choose one of these three models? And I think I said it previously, that one of them is like, if not now, when our numbers are so positive, right? When? Right? And I totally understand that the numbers across the country are changing, and even numbers in the state are changing, right? Like, we, I was in the car for probably twenty minutes today, and I heard like three different reports on, you know, what's happening locally. So I think it's important that we, that we really kind of come up with a plan. Like, what is the framework, I think, is where we use, like, what is the framework for making the decision on what we do? How do we determine whether we're in-person, whether we're hybrid, whether we're remote? I think the more we can come up with a plan and an approach to that, the easier the decision will be and the easier for everybody else to understand, like, okay, this is what it is, and these are the triggers, these are the metrics that are going to cause us to change from one to the next, right? So whether, as we go through this, these frameworks, whether you agree with the numbers or not, the idea that we should have some numbers, like, is an absolute. We should know what is going to cause us to move from one space to the next. So... So I don't know if you can see, it's kind of small, it's actually small. So as we worked through the scenarios, the question was, everybody has a very different perspective on when we should open up. Like, the COVID, we are in a pandemic, as a friend of mine told us, like, this is historic, right? It was last Thursday night, I was kind of beside myself, I was on the phone with him, and he's like, listen, this is like what you learned about when you were a kid in the books. This is not, like, you're unable to manage this just learning your own, so just take a break. I was like, okay, true.
Not a regular...
But I think it is important, like, time is going on, life is going on. Like, this has an impact on our children, on our families, on our community, on our traffic and everything, right? So when do we make that step to go, to go back to reopen school? And there are some folks at one end of the spectrum who might say like, we are not going back until there are no cases, as we call it. Like, until there's, until it's absolutely assured that there's no risk, right? There's no chance that we can, you know, someone can get this disease or someone can transmit that disease. So I think this is the data we're kind of looking at. We were looking at, all right, if there are no cases, let's look at our state of Massachusetts. So in the state of Massachusetts, we have about six point nine million, seven million people living in the state. So if we have no cases in the state of Massachusetts, then we can return, we can... then we can return to school. And of course, if there's no cases in the state of Massachusetts, then we're also not in Carlisle, which is a column there. We also don't have a case in Carlisle. So we can return to school when there's no cases. That is one end of the spectrum, right? That's an extreme end of the spectrum. I don't know when we will, we can't, we don't do that for... It's an extreme end of the spectrum, but it is, it's an idea, right? And when we set up with cases, I think one of the things we want to make sure we enforce in these frameworks is we're talking about cases over that 14-day period, like a revolving 14-day loop. So each day, one day falls off and there's a new day put on the 14-day loop. So if we're looking at cases, whether it's in the town of Carlisle, or in the state of Massachusetts, or in the school community, we're looking at cases over this 14-day cycle. So first, if we go with a most cautious approach, zero cases in the state of Massachusetts, that's when we return. So pretty much, that would move us into probably full remote.
Forever. Forever.
Forever, yes, of course.
This is just like...
But then we have, back in June 25th, the DESE came out with their guidelines, right? The guidelines for reopening school, and they really wanted us to move everyone as many people as possible into in-person learning, right? So under this framework, this is the DESE's kind of baseline model. And they really just left it up to the schools, right? They turned to the districts and said, listen, in your district, you make the decisions. Like, we're not giving you any metrics from the town, we're not giving you any metrics from the county or the state. We're simply saying, you figure it out in your school district. So in our school district, under the frameworks, right, under the guidance from the state, the state told us, just try to get as many people back as possible. Develop your three plans. You can use minimum separation of three feet, right? And, you know, students in grades two through eight, for us, have to wear masks. But kids in preschool, kindergarten, first grade, they really don't have to, that's not a thing they have to do. So they gave us some guidance and they said, here are your three models, like, develop three models and figure out which one works. So in just, in our conversations around, okay, what would work for us? What would be okay? What are the metrics we'd be looking for? I think if you tuned into one of the school committees in the past, I've kind of alluded to, whether it's two or three cases, or four cases, five would be right out, like, we're not doing, like, five would be more cases we handle. So we create our own metrics, right? So looking at this, if we're looking at cases of, you know, zero to four cases among that 750-person group under the state's frameworks, we'd say like, all right, we'd be in-person.
750, all students, all faculty, basically the whole, the whole group.
So if our school community, we had zero to four cases, we would be in-person. Like, that would be what we would be shooting. If we had five cases, right? Again, we just made these numbers, we just kind of put these as reasonable numbers. Now, it could be four or five cases, we might ship to hybrid, right? But pretty much, once we have, we've established that the hybrid doesn't provide that great deal more protection. So if we have the four or five cases, more likely than not, we're gonna go remote because we want to do the cautious thing, want people to be safe. But we would be doing that under the DESE's framework, right? Minimum spacing, minimum mask wear. And we're still using that 14-day rolling method. So that was what the state gave us, they gave us that option. And that's a possibility, we can go along with that, but we know we've had the conversations. And in our community, we say, you may have been thinking about four or five feet because it was functional, but the six feet is really, I know a lot of people share that it's a non-star, especially at faculty and staff, that is a non-star. We need to have the six feet baseline in our classrooms. So that, we've heard that. So this was another one, right? This is the DESE's model. We have the zero, and we have the DESE's model, which gives us a little more flexibility above zero, but we have a couple of other metrics. And then we have the model we've been discussing as our framework, really looking at taking the DESE's model and making it a little more robust and safe. So the guidance we've taken, so if you look at our model, we would say, we're not going with three for minimum, we're gonna go with the six-foot death separations. We're gonna have masks for everybody pre-k through eight, that should be pre-k through eight. And anyone in the classroom who's in that cohort group, if we have a positive case, they would all be quarantined. We would be looking at like, as old, they were only there for 10 minutes, or they sat in the back of the room. So we're trying to be as cautious as possible. Then we came up with metrics, right? So we're looking at the metrics. And we designed metrics for both, for three, for our school community. So that's 750 parent, not parent, faculty, staff and students. We designed metrics for the Carlisle community itself, while 5,100 people live in the Carlisle. And we designed metrics for the state of Massachusetts. And we took a fairly cautious approach. It follows the California model of seven new cases per 100,000 per day is a low transmission rate. So we got the data from that model. But what it says is like, we establish a point through this type of framework that says, listen, if we have zero to three or four cases within our school community and we can handle that with quarantines, then we are gonna be in-person. If we have an additional case that brings us to five or greater, we're probably gonna, well, not probably, we're gonna transition to remote. Like, this is the numbers, we would say like, here's the numbers, zero to four, we're in-person. Five or greater, we're going to remote, and that's the plan. Also, in the town of Carlisle, if there are numbers that show us like, if we have zero to five cases in the town of Carlisle, right, so the metrics, either of these numbers can set us into...
Again, within a 14-day window.
Within a 14-day rolling number.
You gotta keep this in mind.
So in Carlisle, with the 5,100 people, if in any four-day cycle, 14-day cycle, we have, you know, five or six cases in this community, they don't even have to be in the school, right? It's not a student, it's not a teacher, it's just someone in the community, that would trigger us to go remote. Right? So this way, we don't want to put anyone at risk. We're going by the Carlisle numbers, but we don't put anyone at risk. Additionally, we would have metrics for the state. If the state had cases that moved us into, so with the state, the percentages are still at 0.1%, but if we had over 6,860, seems like a lot because we're looking at 6.9 million people. But if we hit that metric, even if we had no cases in Carlisle, even if we had no cases in the schools, right? Even if we don't have any teachers or students with cases, that would trigger us to close.
I think we're at about 3,000, 3,500 a rolling 14-day window now, as I understand it.
That's helpful.
And right now, we're at about 7,000. The model is 7,000, it would be moderately high transmission rates, seven balls. So we're about half, as I roughly understand it right now.
And I think what that does for us, right, it does allow us, even as we hear the news, even as we hear the news that like, there may be cases increasing, we can still look at that in the balance, say, okay, there's cases increasing, but we know if we hit a certain threshold, then it will make the decision for us. Like, it will say, we've hit the threshold at the state level and we're gonna move from in-person to remote. Or if we hit the threshold at the Carlisle community level, we would move from in-person to...
So each of those would be their own silo?
Each would be its own, yes. And any one of those three could trigger it. So even if it's just within the state of Massachusetts, right? If we reach the threshold in that 14-day cycle, we, out of caution, we will go remote, we will move to remote. But this, it gives us a framework, and the numbers, we can fine tune the numbers, right? Like, zero to four to be in-person, we established that based on some impressions that we had, but we may look at zero to three, I don't know. Like, in which cohort, are they in one cohort or are they in multiple cohorts? That, I think we had some flexibility, we were thinking, if they're in two cohorts, yes, but we don't have a requirement. If we have four cases or five cases, if they're in one cohort or two cohorts, we want to make sure we do the cautious thing. But I think with, taking this approach, right, it was really, it's a thoughtful approach that folks came up with. This allows us to know what we will do in each scenario. And if the numbers hit a space, then it triggers us to take a certain action. And we're not trying to manage that on the fly each week.
Right.
We may want to, we may want to look at the framework each week and fine-tune it based on when the data is coming up, but we have a really good sense of what we will be doing based on the numbers in our school community, in the Carlisle community, and at the state level.
So in Carlisle, I'm sorry, in Carlisle, when we're hearing the Board of Health give their numbers weekly, or I'm not, I think she must update it every day. But like, right now, we're at 20 cases confirmed. And that means they have confirmed by a physician or a test that is now logged with the state of Massachusetts. It's a confirmed case. And I think we had 11 probables. So the probables are really not part of this equation.
No, these are confirmed cases now with the contact tracing requirements. So the public health officials will be contacted, so Trish McGee, our Carlisle public nurse, she's contacted regarding a case, and then she does the contact tracing around that. So she would know, and if you did come down, if you wore a positive diagnosis because of the contact tracing protocols, you'd be given documentation, as would the folks who are identified as being in quarantine around you, would get documentation to be like, you are, you need to be unquarantined.
And this is the 20 cases since beginning of the pandemic.
Right, so that's why the 14 window is so important.
This is from the start that we shut down the schools and started, right? This is from that time.
We use the model every day. Today, we just look at the model and say, look back 14 days. Tomorrow, we do the same thing. September 1st, we do the same thing.
So what I really like about this is that we could determine, because the state wants us to tell them on August 10th, what model we're gonna use. We're gonna be a little late with that information for the state.
No worries.
No worries. Come and get me, come and get me. They've got so much to do. Is that we could say on August 12th, we're gonna go full, everybody's coming back. And on August 15th, we could get a statistic, or it would have to be closer because it's gonna be 14 days. On August 25th, we could get a staff that says, we're not going, we're going remote, or we're going hybrid. I personally, I'm not really, I don't feel hybrid is much safer than full, so.
But as Jack pointed out, each day we will have the new data, so it's rolling. But so we can see a trend, like, if you see the numbers increasing for the past 10 days,
Yeah, you know it's coming.
Each day, if we haven't hit the threshold today, if the trend continues tomorrow, we may hit the threshold for the past 14 days, which will move us into another category.
Right. So what that really means is that we are not making a decision like, are you going full-time or are you going hybrid? We're not really making that decision. If we say, based on this criteria, if all those numbers look good, we're gonna go to school. And watching those 14-day windows as we go, we will then make those decisions on whether or not it's less safe for our faculty and students and we're gonna go to remote or go to...
What's great about this, Jim, is it's just a lot of what-ifs, right? There's some what-ifs. It's what I get mostly from parents, it's like, what if this scenario? And it feels like we're like chiseling a decision in stone. And I know there's a lot of concern around that, and I think it's understandable.
Yep.
We don't know. We have no idea what it's gonna look like in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. And anything I think we can do to let people know that this isn't so much a decision that we have to live with between now and even September 5th or 8th, or whenever it is, it could actually change in two weeks. And it should, because the numbers say it should.
If I could just jump in a little bit. I think we established that even like, the number zero to four cases, which represents like 0.5% of our school population, that, we came up with that number, but I would be interested to hear what the Board of Health would...
Thinks about that number.
...contribute around establishing those numbers.
I think the other thing you said, Jim, is the cohort thing. If you have five people and they're all in the same cohort, is that weighted the same as five people across three or four cohorts? My read would be different. It'd be a lot, 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 if you had that.
So we may see things differently, like, I would like, if we have the cases start to manifest themselves in the school, my numbers would be more cautionary, like, I would take a more cautious approach. Because I wouldn't look at the cohort, so to speak. If we hit that five number and it's all in one cohort, five is a significant number, like, five is a significant number.
Yep.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't really, we would design these, like, it wouldn't be me making the decision at that moment in time. Like, we would have those numbers programmed into the framework, right? So that's part of the work we would do is work with the Board of Health, working with the committee, like, what are the numbers we want to program into the framework? Because I won't make that decision at that moment, the decision will be now, but as we would have the conversation now, I would probably take a more cautious approach. If we hit five, five is a significant number.
All right, Sarah.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
Sarah's...
David, David is trying to get in. David is trying to get in. I've met him to the meeting.
No, if he looks at the meeting, and the meeting is telling him he's gotta get on the television channel, or, we're not doing public comment tonight.
Tomorrow morning, though, 8:30.
Yeah, he can come to the meeting tomorrow morning. So Sarah has a question or comment? Thank you.
I have a comment, yeah, I think it's a comment. I think it's important that, you know, like, while we present these plans, we should definitely stress to the Carlisle community which direction of the in-person ones that the school is leaning towards. And I think that we've all sort of expressed interest in one versus the other, but I think that ultimately is Jim's decision. But I think that, I think it's important for parents to know what they'll expect for their in-person. And I think it's equally important for parents to understand what to expect for the remote option. Because as a focus comes onto a full in-person, there's a lot of shift away from planning, I think, around the remote option. And I think that there, you know, there's a portion of the community that doesn't feel that their kids can go to school for whatever reason. And there's also, we have to keep in mind that there's a possibility that we will need to pivot to full remote and we need to be able to be nimble about that, rather than trying to scramble on it.
Right.
So that's my comment.
So Sarah, when you say that which direction we're leaning in the, you mean between hybrid and full-time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I mean, the state says you have to give your three plans, right?
Yeah.
That's a sign. Right now, we're not, we don't, we don't have to lock in to anything.
No.
We can even up till the day, you know, at any point, things can change.
Yeah.
But I think that while we have that flexibility, I think that people want to have some kind of predictability. And so we should at least, we should come to some kind of consensus into which direction we are going, right? And so if it's, we are going for a, we're preparing for a full in and also the full remote to accommodate, you know, that piece, right? Well, but also the reality that there's, whatever we're at, what are we at, 15% right now? But, you know, the numbers can change. So we need to get the polls back from the survey back, you know, a newer survey,
Right.
to understand what percentage of kids we're talking about. Because...
That was just a snapshot in time, now it's a different snapshot, yeah.
I think, you know, and two weeks from now, it may, it may yet be different.
Yeah.
But I think that we need to constantly be checking in. But I worry, I think, that the ability to pivot to remote becomes less less secure if we, you know, I mean, it's amazing that we have the ability to provide in-person, full-time school, right? We are probably one of the few districts that can do that, right?
True, yeah.
I just don't, I just want to make sure that we're always also thinking about that other, you know, possibility.
Yeah, I think that we, I think we have to, I think we have to assume that at some point, we may be, very realistically, be called upon to go to remote for a period of time. And so we need to be able, there needs to be a place to land when that decision is made.
And also, the families that are choosing not to send their kids need to understand, is the remote option that's going to be offered to them? If there's no, because in a hybrid, it's easier to say, okay, there's already, everybody's already doing some remote, so it's easier to offer a more robust option on a remote basis, right? Whereas if the focus is on in-person learning, I mean, and making it wrong on this, it seems that it's harder, it's harder on the teachers, it's harder, it's harder from a management standpoint to really develop a robust remote option. And I think that parents need to understand how robust it will be, right?
If we start off full-open?
Yeah, I would say, that's a great challenge, right?
We have to offer the full remote option. We have to offer the full remote option, is my understanding, right? Isn't that what the state said?
Yes, we are responsible to educate children and families where they choose a full remote option, correct.
Okay, right? And so if we're, if we're, so, I mean, we're in a very unique position where most districts are doing some kind of hybrid thing, right?
Yeah.
Because, because they have to. They don't have the space, they don't have the resources, they just don't have the ability, they don't have, you know. But if we are not, if our students who do, and I don't, I don't know how to better describe this, but if our students who are doing in-person learning, right? In Concord, for example, if you are a middle schooler, right? You do some in-person learning, and you do some remote learning every week, right?
Yeah.
One day, one day, no, right? And so if you are this then student instead who opts to be fully remote, you can take advantage of all of those days when there are remote opportunities, right? There's already remote opportunities being designed for the bulk of the students, for everybody anyway, right?
Yeah.
Instead, we don't have students who are, we are, you know, we're one or the other, right? You're either in or you're out, right?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't made those decisions yet, right?
Yeah, she's just trying to differentiate between going from full to virtual, or hybrid to virtual.
No, no, that's not at all. I'm trying to understand what curriculum we're offering on a remote basis. If we're not having, if the, you know, I don't know why this...
Let me try, let me try. Can I try?
Go ahead.
What I would say, Sarah, is you are absolutely correct, right? Our ability to offer a robust remote program, if we are in all-in-person, to those families who choose that, is challenged, we are challenged by that. We are challenged by that because of, because I would say the availability of our resources and our scale, right? In some places, the scale matches, and they can have people who are dedicated to one, you know, you're going to do the remote learning for students, and everybody else is going to do the in-person, if it works out that way. I think, so part of the data I need to gather from the two groups of the next survey would help us to get a better grasp of what any feasibility around that possibility might be. You know what I mean? Having some folks that might be dedicated to a remote model. But that would be dependent on the data. The data we got from the first survey said that, it was 87% wanted in-person, and then it was 50/50 the faculty wanted on comfort level. So we have to be more, we have to be more kind of fine and specific with our questions in our next round of surveys. But you're right, I don't have, at this moment in time, a curriculum that I can share with parents who are choosing remote to tell them exactly what their remote is going to look like. It is highly dependent on the model we have in place. It doesn't sound reassuring for those folks, but at this moment in time, that's where we are.
My question is, or my thoughts are less about having assurances of what curriculum looks assurance that it's not a diminished curriculum.
Are we following the same curriculum?
Yeah, so again, that's difficult in that relative world, right? So now everything's relative diminished from, is it diminished from the remote, when everyone's on remote? Is it diminished from in-person? Is it diminished from in-person back in February? Is it diminished from in-person in September 15th? Like it's a very relative question. And I don't have a specific answer, I don't have an answer for it. I just, I don't know. That's one of the great challenges for us, right? The NYCS, now I'm talking about like districts across the Commonwealth. When the Department of Education put that upon us, not only are we supposed to educate everyone in some type of traditional fashion, whether that's in-person or remote, but now we also have to run a parallel program for people who choose a parallel program? That was a lot for them to ask of us. And we're still trying to resolve that. So I'm still looking at options and opportunities. Again, the surveys will give us some more information and see where we stand in the moment. If we can design some other type of approach, we will take that, reach out to, you know, I'm in communication with Lori Hunter all the time, see if we can somehow team up or jump on anything that they may have going on. That's a possibility, we have to continue the dialogue with her. Just trying to explore it, but this is one. So in our world, right, where being Carlisle, right, we can do, we can be nimble. If we go to cohort models, if we go to hybrid, Matt and Dennett and Lori can sit down and handcraft the cohort, and this will be like the best cohort we could possibly have for these kids. In an economy of scale, we're up against it sometimes. And this is, we're seeing that now. We're seeing just in the depth, in our ability to meet these individualized needs, in the depth of the work that we're calling upon our administrative team to do, right? So it's only, you know, Matt, Lori, and Dennett and Ann, right? That's really the administrative team trying to, kind of, get all these things accomplished and make all this stuff work. So it is a challenge. And this is one of those spaces that there's, is obviously a gap between what we're able to do for those families at this moment in time. We're going to try to close that gap in the next four or five weeks and come up with a plan, but we still have some exploration to do around that.
Yeah, I think that's why I was asking about what, earlier on, about what the difference is between being, you know, like if your remote are you essentially, like, could you put, you know, an iPad with a kid who's zooming in to represent that kid in the classroom, right? And they watch, because from, as I said, from seeing how the classroom is set up, given that we're not, we're not working around those nice new collaborative tables anymore, right? If there's collaborative work, it's more, it's more through electronic medium or something, because there's no sharing of any tangible resources, right? And so, I mean, I would think that you, that the kid is zooming into the class or videoing in somehow, you know, is watching the class, and there has to be some kind of mechanism through which they can ask questions, and they can participate in conversations. And then, and then maybe the ones who are remote break out into small discussion when it comes to that, or, I don't know. So I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a huge challenge, right? Because, I guess a lot just depends on like, how does, how does classroom management look?
Right.
And these children will need supervision, parents helping them while they're on Zoom.
For the younger children, yeah, they'll put the parent supervision.
And I hear, we've spoken before, Sarah, there is a train of, is, like what will in-person really feel under the new procedures and protocols? Yeah. I wish I could give you the answer and tell you how it equates with a fully robust remote model. We're not sure at this moment.
Okay, anyone else have anything, any other questions or something they want to add for us all to consider?
Yeah, I actually, thank you, Christine. I wanted to add, because I've heard this question come up. How do we know in this crazy time of testing and test results not showing up, how do we know that all of our cases are getting reported to Carlisle Public Health? And we do know that our nurse, public health nurse, gets any state data that links to Carlisle residents.
Right.
Correct.
Yep, Board of Health gets it, yeah.
In fact, she gets it before anybody, as I understood it.
It's posted on a state website, so they just have to...
But this is an important clarification, because, you know, people are plugging, are plugged into social media, and there's just so much misinformation there. And how the, you know, how the process works, it creates, you know, other anxiety. And our nurse, we share our nurse with Concord, and who else?
Our public health nurse?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's Concord, Carlisle, Lincoln.
Is it Maynard?
And Maynard.
Maynard.
Yeah, I heard Maynard. So she has a good understanding of what's happening in Iowa.
But so does our Board of Health. I mean, Linda Fantasia gets that, that's where she lives right now.
Yeah, there's a state epidemiological network, so every case goes in there. So it's considered, you know, community flu disease. So I mean, that's the same for all the different diseases.
Right, yeah, not just this one, yeah.
Not just COVID.
Yep.
Could you elaborate and tell us a little bit about, you know, how transparent that system is? So parents are not so worried about, you know, reporting and...
So these cases, you know, it's almost like, you know, like an Excel, a front-end, you know, like a spreadsheet thing, where they put these things in, they put, you know, the person, the address, and that's anonymized for people outside of, you know, the epidemiological network. But from the people inside the state, they know Carlisle has X number of cases, these are where the cases are located. One thing, we were getting pushback on, people would contact the Board of Health and say, oh, I'd like to know the address of where these sick people are. Or what's their names, right? And it's like, no, you can't have that, because that's from the HIPAA, from privacy. You can't have that. So our emergency responders, like fire department, they know where those cases are, and they can do wellness checks, et cetera. But we, there are no cases that have been diagnosed through, you know, PCR assay that are not inside that network. So there's no, there's no missing cases.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it's electronic.
Thank you.
And that's when all the trace, tracing follow-up happens, because it triggers that, yeah.
And so if a case were to be reported for a student or a staff member, that would just be reported to the school? Is that how that would work? How would we know that it's within the school community?
Does Linda tell Jim?
Yeah, I mean, there must be a communication on how they, you know, they do the school cases, and, you know, who, you know, has a needs and they'll on basis on that.
Because it feels like up until this point, it's been by town and by county and all of that data, but not at the company or...
Yeah.
Right.
No, I get it.
All right. Does anyone have anything else that they want to go over?
I, it hasn't come up yet, but I know, I know that higher education at least, they are already in session, they have students on campuses. I've seen something called a pledge, that is, and I, and also private schools are having parents and students sign a pledge of, you know, the conduct and reporting and all of this. Are we considering doing such a thing here as well to, you know, to get the community on the same page?
I think we talked about it, Jim. Sort of like when you get an iPad.
Yeah, we have, I spent part of his day working on that today. Exactly.
I pledged him that.
We weren't looking at it as a pledge, we were looking, he was designing more of a handbook, kind of a guide for parents. You know, what the expectations are upon return and behaviors, et cetera. And then kind of that commitment to follow the guide, so that's...
And Jim, isn't there going to be an online check-in each day? Or each week?
That's some of the Lauren Sawyer products, you'll have to see how that works out.
Okay. Does that help?
That's very helpful, thank you. Yeah, so, everyone, it's a very thoughtful process. All these people spending, all these volunteers spending countless hours together on Zoom, coming up with a plan and looking at every possibility and asking all these questions. It's grateful.
I said it on last week's call, but Amanda's been on some of these Massachusetts Association School Committee calls, and you hear what's going on in the level of either lack of transparency between administration, school committee, and parents. You know, we were three, four weeks into it. Only, as I said, three of the 26 people that were on my breakout group had seen a feasibility study, and even started it in so many towns. You know, the level, just across the board. Name, name what's going on, you know, administration, faculty, teachers, you know, fellow committee members, like...
It's humbling.
It's, 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 sometimes we forget. We live in Carlisle, we get in our bubble, and we forget, like, just how fortunate we are in terms of what we have here. And we double benefit because we have low enrollment, another benefit a lot of towns, you know, don't have. And it allows for some of this, you know, understanding and curiosity and creativity to keep, work the problem, work the problem, work the problem. When you see a lot of communities just capitulate. Like they literally just like gave up. I mean, they were talking to us on the phone, and they didn't even try. And they just sort of gave up. And I know that we have a lot of advantages here in Carlisle that a lot of others don't. And just incredibly humbled, incredibly grateful. Can't say, can't say enough about it.
Okay, so to our viewing folks at home, I would say this. We have another meeting at 8:30 in the morning. So come to that meeting with your questions and your ideas. There will obviously be a public comment section in that movie, uh, that movie, that meeting. This was really just so that the school committee could sort of just really drill down to the things that are going to help us get to that important decision, so.
Jim, can you walk through the models again tomorrow morning?
Yeah, he will, he will.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
I appreciate that process, it's very helpful.
Anything else from Board of Health that we didn't cover? I mean, we, thank you for attending tonight. Been very, you know, a lot of input that's been, I think, great for the discussion. So thank you both.
Gene, I wish you'd let someone get a word in edgewise. Carrie, thank you for being the public tonight.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thanks, everybody. I hope this was helpful to you, I found it very helpful.
Can motion adjourn, do we have to official?
Yep, and so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
My second.
So moved.
Nice job, Sarah. Discussion, all in favor?
Comparative A.
Hunter's A.
Larry's A.
Can we say, all in favor, A?
No, we're all in person.
Oh my gosh, you're right. You don't even have to say it in person. Well, Sarah does.